I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, July 19th. And if we would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your hand over your heart and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
And I would like to take a moment. As you all know, in the last three weeks at least, there have been at least 181 deaths from all kinds of terrorists and just, I don't even know what to call them, terrorist attacks and everything else under the sun. And we've lost a lot of law enforcement people throughout the United States and abroad, as well as many young people, old people, family, children. And if we had to stay for a minute for each of them, we would be here for three hours. That does not include all of the people that have been maimed and will be suffering for the rest of their lives for the atrocities that they've just experienced. So if we could please have a moment of silence. Denise will call, please.
Councilmember Cassidy?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Sampson?
Here.
Mayor Proton Olsen?
Here.
And Mayor Marshall?
Here. Announcements? If I may make the first announcement, if that's okay? As you all know, we have a new face sitting at the table over here on our left, and this is our new city manager, David Jenkins. He started last Friday. He came in and surprised us a day early, which was really good. And we are so happy that you are here to join us. And if you would like to say a few words at this point, you may.
Mayor of council, first of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to return at Avalon. For Terry and I, it's been a lifelong adventure coming here since I worked here before. In spite of the fact that I worked here before, you hired me again. So I appreciate that. And I look forward to working with you, for you, and for the people of this community to do the best job possible, that we provide the best service in the most efficient manner to ensure that they have opportunity and good lives. And I've enjoyed the help and assistance of all staff. I want to particularly say that Denise Raddie has been very helpful, very insightful, and her service, I know to you, has been great. And for me, it's been a great benefit to have her insight and advice and help and cooperation. So thank you.
You're welcome. And perhaps I was out of order, but I, of course, we would like to thank the interim city manager Denise Raddie for her incredible dedication, well, for as many years as you worked for the city. She's not leaving us. But she is leaving as interim city manager. We can't thank you enough. You are just such a valuable employee and dedicated, and I know David is going to enjoy you, and we're going to still enjoy you. So thank you so much for what you do. So those flowers. Yes. You're welcome. You're welcome. We have another little thing for you, but we're going to give it to you later. Okay, let's see, do we have any other announcements?
Yes, I would like our new community services director to maybe stand, please, so we can introduce him to the community. This is David Hunky. Do you want to say a few words, David? Not me, Dan?
Lots of dues here. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Also, thank you for the opportunity here. I'm really looking forward to serving the community. Thank you for that moment of silence, that chills, just standing there in silence in memory of what's going on. But really looking forward to the opportunities. Staff has been great so far, and looking forward to some of the projects we've got on board. And I'd like to sit and meet with each of you at some point in time and hear about some specifics as I go out in the community to get some of that feedback at the same time. So, thank you.
Thank you. You know, it's really nice to feel like we have a full complement of staff again, where maybe people like Denise can breathe a little easier, David Hart can kind of take a little bit of that weight off of his shoulders that he's been carrying. And we're really looking forward to this team as we move forward. So this is the first time we've had a full complement of staff in probably two or three years. So it feels really good. Thank you. Okay. Other announcements? Written communications?
I have none.
Okay. City manager report?
My first day was eventful. It was good. I will say that I did write a letter to the Public Utilities Commission, California Public, just asking some questions in regard to some issues facing our community. I also did send, as I indicated during my interviews, a letter to the California Energy Commission, asking for their assistance for projects and initiatives that you have already identified and need funding for. And I did meet with all employees on Monday morning. Good meeting. I feel real good about our city family and our city team and our progress we're going to make together.
Great, thank you. Is there a city attorney report?
Yeah, at the last council meeting, you directed staff to solicit information regarding putting on a medical marijuana program for the city that would be open to the public and would advise the pros and cons and experiences throughout the country. We've done our research, and we've, one group in particular, it's called SCI Consulting Group, they've been doing the seminars in each one of the counties the last couple of months, and they're willing to come to Avalon. They will charge, everyone wants to charge now, but it's only $1,850. And they would spend four hours answering, preparing the program, putting it on. They'd have two people here. They'd present a fair and balanced of both views, and they give the council some information in terms of whether you wanted to draft your own initiative, stick with the initiative that is currently going forward. And so we're prepared to go ahead and tell them that we'd like them to come in the next two weeks. Obviously, we have the deadline of August 18th for the council to propose its own initiative, so that would give us time to have them present and you to make up your mind what you want to do. So that's, I'm reporting as terms of your direction, and we'd like to go forward with that.
That's what you want, right, Mayor?
And this should be something that's available to the entire community?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We would advertise it in a way that members of the public could attend.
How will you choose which contractor you're going to hire?
These people are the most reputable in terms of they're both sides. And they're the ones that the league and other cities have been having come, and the counties have been having come to their areas and do it. They were also the lowest price.
And you shared a couple of little things with me, like, maybe share some of the topics that they will be discussing, so that we have a better understanding.
Okay, so they're going to be discussing the history of medical marijuana and cannabis in California, the current structure of the cannabis industry, the legal environment in terms of what's allowed, what's not allowed. They're going to be talking about other states' experiences with it, what good things have happened and what bad things have happened. They're going to talk about the permissible scope of cities and banning completely or permitting, what you can and can't do. They would be talking about the health and safety regulations that are required if you go ahead and have marijuana, talking about taxing opportunities. In other words, what you can do to, if you decide to allow medical marijuana, what taxing opportunities or revenue opportunities are there. And then again, if you decide to have a medical marijuana, or if the initiative passes, what monitoring and compliance obligations you have as a city, as well as what they have to do with states. And then again, if you allow it, they've got policies and procedures for your own regulations that they can propose. Again, you know, right now, many cities completely ban it, and so there's less regulation there if you just say no. But if you do say yes, then you have a wide variety of regulations that you can use, and they've cobbled them all together. So it would be a comprehensive, it's a four-hour comprehensive deep dive into medical marijuana.
And David, have you had any experience with this?
You mean with marijuana, Mayor? No, I, no, no.
You didn't inhale.
No, 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 no. Navy chief dad would have had some things to say about that. But I've been in communities where there's been initiatives. I think what's proposed is a good idea. It gives a balanced view, my understanding, of the issue. It gives a community an opportunity to hear those sides and answer questions in relationship to the matter. It sounds very informative. It talks about options that the city attorney has referenced. And it's a good investment before people make important decisions that affect the community. Ultimately, people make the decisions on those matters, but it's important that they have all the information.
Counsel?
Yeah, that's fine.
We all good?
Yeah, I think we should.
Absolutely.
So we don't have to bring it back? We can direct?
No, so what we'll do is, I will get dates from them, and then we'll coordinate with your calendars, so that we can do it, hopefully on a date when everyone's...
Public is allowed? We want them to all show up. We want, we want people to show up at this one. We want them to talk. We want us to hash this out, brainstorm it, and see whether or not it's going to be something that is doable or not.
Yes.
Okay.
Great.
Very good weekend? Thanks, Scott.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Is that it? Is it the city attorney? Okay. Councilmember reports. Who would like to start?
Let's see, I just have, I have very little. Okay, some people want the sidewalk along the museum that goes from the museum up to the St. Lawrence finished, so, and I understand, I've spoken a little bit to staff about this, people are walking in the street, so that's my problem, is they're going from the museum around where Mike Flynn pulls his vehicles in to go do his construction out back of the museum. But I just want to expedite that process, to get that walkway open, so people don't have to go into the street. They look kind of perplexed when they have to do that, so, and it's kind of dangerous also. So if we could finish that sidewalk as soon as possible, and then, let's see, I had another one that I wanted to mention. Okay, so Joe Machado has a lot of bees, so I talked to Denise, put in a couple more traps up there, the yellow jacket traps. And let's see, drones. Okay, there was a drone out in front of the fireworks show this year. It was kind of distracting to me and to a lot of other people I talked to. And then I've had a lot of other people come back, at least five people come to me and tell me that there's been drones in their face, in front of their living room, following out walkways. So if we need to bring back and talk about drones again, that'd probably be a good idea, because I think it's an infringement of people's privacy and personal airspace.
But, and you did report, though, that the FAA is the one that regulates that, Scott, and not that?
They gave it back to us.
Oh, they gave it back to us?
Yeah, actually, the FAA has exerted exclusive jurisdiction. They are working on some regulations, though, to give more control to the cities, but for the time being, FAA says that's their responsibility, because it deals with airspace. So they don't want cities to do any regulation of it.
I think they regulate it below 400. That was in the league magazine.
The problem is, is people do their own regulation. They do their own monitoring and getting rid of those things. And it's dangerous, you know? It can be dangerous. Somebody starts popping off at those things, or BB guns, or whatever it takes. But we have a lot of drones that fly really high, and our helicopters fly really low around here. It's really extremely dangerous in our community. And it's kind of an invasion of public space, is what it is, of private property. So, anyway, that's about all I have for now.
Jim Luchahun, have you gotten complaints about drones?
Anymore? Any. We've had relatively few complaints recently, however, I have noticed the huge increase personally. So it's kind of interesting that we've had fewer complaints, but I personally am seeing many more. And if anything, I think our landscape makes the 400-foot measurement a little abstract, because we have such steep upslope, and 400 feet from the beach is right near your window at probably, what, Middle Terrace? So that's the challenge that we have here.
Mayor, in comment to Councilmember Sampson's idea, you know, it may not be a bad idea if the council really wants to move the FAA, to try to encourage the FAA initially in a nice way, to allow more regulation, that you do that. I know around airports, where there's municipal airports, there's, you know, we have helicopters coming in, we have, for a variety of reasons, a pebbly, and...
Military queue.
Yeah, maybe we can encourage just a letter of concern to the regional that's in LA, and maybe express concerns, and maybe that would have some, be of some motivation to them to make a change. If that's your thought, we can certainly do that.
I'd appreciate that. Absolutely. Do we understand it a little better? It's kind of neat, but maybe, you know, we can regulate it and at least do it on permitting. That way, there's not 20 of them in the air at once. Maybe there's two or three, and they're permitted through the city. That way, we know what's going on, and we can keep it safe. And then we can at least reach out to maybe the airport and the helicopters and let them know if somebody's flying. But if they're just unregulated, we're just looking, there's just a matter of time till there's an accident. I mean, plus, we've got the parasail. So we got parasailing, we got military jets, we got helicopters, we got people that fly by in planes a lot. So anyway, kiting, kites, there's just a lot of things that could possibly go wrong. And I just think that a good, healthy discussion would be a good thing to start with, so. I'm done.
So I think, though, do we want to direct about a little letter, just bringing their attention?
Be happy to do that, Mayor. You might copy the lead, too.
Yes, thank you. That's a good suggestion.
Okay. Councilmember Hernandez, or Cindy?
Could we have city staff look into having the beaches raked each morning, especially during the busy summer season? Whereas, you know, raking picks up trash, picks up some of the larger rocks. It also makes the beaches much more safe and attractive. This used to be done moons ago, and I'm not, I don't, I'm not sure who was responsible for that, but what came to my mind was possibility of the sanitation workers from the harbor in the summer months, and then maybe...
Are you talking the lower beaches, Councilmember Cassidy, or the upper?
Like, South Beach and Middle Beach and...
The dry, the dry sand on the upper part?
Yeah.
They sifted them. They had sifters.
That was LA County that used to do it.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they did.
I think one of the problems was, at one time, was the dust coming up from that, and some of the merchants were complaining that the dust was getting on their products in there. But if we did it early enough, I don't see any problems.
Yeah.
But I mean, there was, at one time, that was one of the problems we had, like, we used to do that.
Well, with a proper outreach, too. I mean, it seems like it would be something you would do either very, very early in the morning or in the middle of the night. But with a proper outreach, too, we could work with those who go down early in the morning and lay blankets and chairs, and so, you know, it could...
It almost has to be done before 4:00 AM.
Right.
Yeah, well, I, you know, it's, there's obviously some...
Or at night.
It's not necessarily just an attractive measure, it's also a safety measure.
What's it for, again?
There's a lot of trash, there's cigarette butts, there's, you know, leftover stuff that gets into the sand, and so that's, you know, a method of making the beaches more safer and more attractive.
There's not much sand left. There's like two inches of sand down there now. It's mostly all Corey filled dirt. We need to put more sand on the beaches. There's this much sand on the beaches right now. You can put your finger that deep. I mean, it's...
Could we brainstorm staff and come back with you?
That's exactly what I'm asking. Could we just have...
We can do that.
Just an idea to talk about, staff. And then I wanted to sort of report out, I have been having some conversations with city staff about moving forward to initiate the plastic bag ban in the city, as well as initiating a styrofoam or polystyrene ban for restaurants. And also, we've been talking about cigarette butt disposals and possibly recycling of those. And so mentioning it here, I wanted to also let the community know that this is part of a bigger plan and city goal, city council goal, of making Avalon a much more green and environmentally friendly city. So the items that I had hoped would be on the agenda tonight are not on the agenda, because we want to look at this from a bigger perspective. And instead of instituting this ordinance, this ordinance, this ordinance, city staff has already moved forward on a couple of those items. But to wrap it up into a larger policy, and the policy would be to become a more green, greener environment and our green community and environmentally friendly. So Paula, I see you're here, too, and there's been a few other items that have been added to that list as well, which is why we're, at the city staff level, we're talking about what is the policy, and that would be the policy that we want to create, and all of these items that we want to address would fall under the larger policy. So there has been movement on that. So thank you to city staff as well for that. And that's all I have to report.
Oh, my stuff was for Dennis, and he's not here. I will just carry that over.
He may never come back.
If he comes back.
A couple things. I want to thank the rec department for getting the water polo back in. I noticed it's back in there, which is something good for the kids to do. And in the budget, there's an additional quasi code enforcement person, who I really think would be a great idea upon cruise ship days, he plays crossing guard. Because at Metropole and Crescent today, there was like 12 golf carts deep, going both ways, and people kind of just stringing across the road, one by one, by one, by one. I know it's also a problem with Clarissa and Crescent, too.
And you're looking at her because she's in charge of code enforcement, or because you're forgetting that we have a new city manager?
It's just used to look over that way.
That's a good, that's a good point. I just did the same thing. It's a good point.
David, in the budget, we have a, it's not a full-blown code enforcement guy, it's kind of a helper-type person, who's police up front street, you know, cigarettes smoking, dogs on Crescent Avenue. Maybe on cruise ship days, he can throw it a little tiny between 10:00 and 2:00 or something.
We certainly can, I'm sure, take action in that regard. That certainly sounds, it's very important, and I'm sure we can do that, and we'll keep you all, all of you, excuse me.
Make sure he has an orange vest.
Yes, yes.
And a gun.
Okay.
He's going to need it.
So this is a conversation maybe for planning to consider. I don't know what's in the books about summertime construction on the major thoroughfares in Avalon. The one place that sticks out in my mind is the Glimmer Plaza. That, it's totally obstructed, and I don't know if there's something in the books that says you have to, on certain streets, or whatever the rule be, it stop in a, you know, Memorial Day, and it starts up again Labor Day. I don't know if there's, if we could look into that, if there's anything on the books now, currently, Amanda?
Currently, excuse me, anytime someone comes in and gets an obstruction permit, we can impose conditions on it. So if we want to limit it to certain days, we want to have them remove it after certain hours. The Glimmer got an obstruction permit to do that work that they have going on down there. But I think it's a valid point. There may be some places where we don't want that happening during the season or during certain hours. I don't believe there's any specific language in the code. It's kind of a case-by-case where we would add a condition of approval to that specific permit at that specific place.
Because I know that they didn't plan on that project to take as long as it did.
I believe that is the truth, yes.
But we, but that's also the Catalina factor to a certain degree. You get into an old building, there's going to be more work than you anticipate. But I don't know if it's something that you can consider, the planning commission wants to look at, so moving forward maybe, because they're having to go, you know, out on the street.
I think, yeah, they're directing traffic out into the street, on that side of the street while that sidewalk's obstructed.
Right.
So obstruction permits, I think, are not in the planning code? I don't believe.
Okay.
Mayor, I think you have authority over the use of public sidewalks, and I think that to the extent that there's an obstruction of public sidewalks that you deem to be unreasonable or that, or you want to make it more reasonable, then, you know, I think there's probably broad authority for us to request, and I'm sure that a contractor working with us would do. You know, I think we can make requests and more, if necessary. It's a public sidewalk, and as you said, the project's going on for reasons longer. It's similar to what Mr. Sampson said up in the other street, where the sidewalk's obstructed. And so you want to encourage them, is the first thing. And maybe you set forth requirements that, at certain times, that, to the extent it's safe, because it has to be safe, so that maybe that it's open. So I, and I think there's something we can, we can do, we can ask, we can request.
And Scott can confirm, I think, even once we issue an obstruction permit, once they start obstructing, if we realize that there's some other issues that we didn't foresee, we, I would believe we have the authority to go back and modify that permit and impose additional conditions on it, if it's a public safety issue.
Your municipal code provides that temporary obstructions are governed by city manager and planning director, and then we come to the council for encroachment permits, which are permanent. And so we can handle this on a staff level if it's not permanent. And again, if there are conditions that change or the project goes too long, we can, on a staff level, change conditions.
Because it's, I think it's something you need to make them aware of before they start construction, because then to say, if we showed up tomorrow and said, excuse me, we're going to have to shut you down midweek, we're going to have to shut you down from 8:00 to 5:00, and, I mean, they wouldn't work, what are we doing? So however we could make the transition smoother in the future if this kind of thing happened. Okay. Okay, that's all I had. So we have a presentation from Jeff Lawrence from Southern California Edison. Come on up.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, member of the city council and staff. My name is Jeff Lawrence, senior project manager for Southern California Edison. I'd like to give you an update on our Stage Two water rationing plan results, as well as an update on our desalination plant number two and our Stage Three update. So... ................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................ We are at just under 42% reduction in water use, and that while visitor counts have gone up slightly over 26%. So, we've been able to reduce our water use by about 159 acre feet, which is equivalent to about a 10 or 11-month supply of water since we've activated Stage 2 water rationing. So, it's been very effective in delaying further stages of rationing thus far. At the request of council, we wanted to provide some additional data. There was a request to provide a comparison of residential versus commercial water rationing numbers. So, what you have here is a breakdown of residential and commercial for our baseline period, which is again, June 2012 through May 2013. Residential water use was about 184 acre feet, and commercial water use was 179 acre feet. So, relatively even over the course of the year. That does fluctuate as the summer months approach, the commercial usage that we've seen in this past year does go up considerably. But on a calendar year basis, relatively even. The next column of data compares the calendar year of 2015. Residential customers reduced their water use to 104 acre feet, and the reduction compared to their baseline was 43%. For our commercial customers, almost identical results for the calendar year 2015. The total water use was 105 acre feet, and they reduced their baseline water use by 41%. So, you can see both classes of customers are equally contributing to the results of Stage 2 water rationing hovering around the 40% to 42% reduction in water use.
Jeff, is this island-wide or Avalon?
This is island-wide.
Okay.
And then, the third column of data that you see, the third section of data, I should say, is our most recent 12 months, our rolling 12 months. So, that period of time is July 2015 through June 2016. Relatively similar results. Residential water use was 103 acre feet. Commercial water use was 108 acre feet. So, on the residential side, it was a reduction in water use of 44%, while our commercial customers reduced their water use by 39%. So, we'd like to thank both classes of customers for their water conservation and rationing efforts during the Stage 2 and this drought crisis. So, the slide that you're looking at here is our compliance to the Stage 2 water rationing. You'll note that in April is when we impose the new fine structure and we reset the clock on violations. So, the red line is the number of customers that have received two or more violations. And since we're still in the infancy of that new fine structure, we haven't had any customers reach that level yet. We are starting to see some customers, though, that are receiving a flow restrictor for the first time, which is the blue line there for the month of June. We're at 2.7% of our customers that had a billing period close, a bill cycle close, resulted in a violation of a flow restrictor. So, this is another comparison of our commercial and residential use, but this is a volumetric comparison. And this is for the current year, 2016. We have data from January through May available at this time. We should have the June numbers here pretty soon. You'll note in January, residential water use was at 6 acre feet. And for the same month, commercial water use was at 6.3 acre feet. So far this year, the residential water use has remained relatively even, hovering right around 6 acre feet, fluctuating between 5.5, 6.5 acre feet. We've seen a considerable increase since March in customer, customer water use on a volumetric basis. In May, that was up to 11.2 acre feet.
And Jeff, is this island-wide as well?
This is island-wide as well.
Is there, is there a way to further break this down of the water that's drawn from the reservoir to determine how much actually goes to the Wrigley Reservoir, which ultimately feeds into town, versus what's drawn directly, such as Hamilton Cove and one or two of the camps up the coast?
Yeah, we, we could break this down by water system and show that comparison. Yeah, it's a, it takes a little bit of time to collect that data.
Right.
But we could work on having that for you next month.
That'd be grand. Thanks.
And just to add to that, are the vacation valves included in commercial or residential? Residential.
You can, you can, just, when you get water up at Wrigley Reservoir, which is what, 9 million gallons? Is that what that holds up there?
Correct.
Okay, can that be distributed either to Avalon or Baker Tanks or Hamilton Cove from there, right?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. But normally, the water from Middle Ranch predominantly goes to Hamilton, correct? Or both?
It depends on what our demand is in Avalon.
Okay.
And what the production is from the desal plant. So, when, when the demand in Avalon is below our production capability from the desal plant, then generally, we're only sending water to Hamilton Cove from Wrigley.
Okay.
But then, when, when demand in town exceeds our production capability from the desal plant, that's when we start sending water from Wrigley into Avalon.
Okay. And then, it goes to Baker Tanks and then is distributed in Avalon, correct? Is that how it's distributed?
I believe that's correct. I'd have to validate that.
Okay. Thanks.
So, moving on to our desalination plant number two, I have some good news to report. As of last Friday, we've received our amended permit from the Division of Drinking Water for our brine mode operation. So, as you recall, we had our amended permit for seawater mode back in April issued, and the plant has been online producing water since then. We're just under 8 million gallons produced so far in seawater mode. We are now in progress of starting up the desal plant in brine mode and are actually, as of right now, sending water into discharge. So, the plant is running and producing. And then, with all, our expectation right now is to actually start sending water from the desal plant into Avalon tomorrow in brine mode, which is our higher, highest production mode. So, we've come a long way, but happy to report the good news on that desalination plant. Unfortunately, the desalination plant solely by itself cannot defer Stage 3 indefinitely. We were, at the time when we were proposing the desalination plant to you last summer, the expectation, the forecast was an El Nino winter was going to benefit the community, and the desalination plant would defer Stage 3 beyond the winter season. As unfortunately everyone knows, there was an El Nino climate condition, but the rainfall was north of Southern California. So, if you look at the map here, if I had showed you this map, which is the U.S. Drought Monitor for California showing widespread drought conditions, if I showed you this map back a year ago, you'd see a lot more red on the, for the state of California. This is not as grim of a picture statewide because of the water they receive from the El Nino. But you'll see a heavy concentration of red areas in Southern and Central California, which unfortunately is where we reside and do not benefit from that water up north. The, right now, 43% of the state is still under extreme or exceptional drought conditions. Due to the continued threat of California's historic drought, depleting groundwater reserves, and the La Nina climate pattern that's being predicted for this year, which historically produces less than average rainfall, we can no longer continue at Stage 2 rationing levels as your water purveyor. As I mentioned before, the reservoir level is at 15% of its capacity. And we've been, been trying to balance the needs of the community with the groundwater reserves that we have. But we are no longer comfortable with the water reservoir level at where it's at and continuing at 25% rationing levels. By implementing Stage 3 now, we can reduce the likelihood of having to enter further stages of rationing and be able to get through what may be another dry winter. We are at near-recorded lows for our reservoir level right now. The lowest recorded level we have was in 1977, 150 acre feet. And we know the reservoir level at that time drew down even more in the fall, because that recorded water level was in the summertime. So, we likely have been down to the 120 acre foot level. But we are now at 161 acre feet, quickly approaching that 150-foot acre level, our lowest recorded history, and likely entering that 120 acre foot level by the end of the year. And we have not been below that water level at Middle Ranch Reservoir. So, we are deeply concerned about it. That's why now we feel the need to increase the level of rationing in Catalina.
Wait a minute. Can you turn that slide back, please?
Sure.
It says rationing levels determined based on the following criteria: water system, volumetric use, and customer account type. How does that distinguish customer account type? Is it, is, are, are the residents going to get preferential treatment over businesses? Which I think would be kind of important.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be happy to expand on that. So, we are taking a slightly different approach now. Our Schedule 14.1 Rationing and Conservation Plan used to dictate 50% rationing straight across the board, which is what we implemented for Stage 2. We now have a little more flexibility to take a more targeted approach in our rationing plan. And so, that's why we're looking at various data points, including water system, condition of the water system, volumetric use, and then also customer account types. Looking at commercial usage and residential uses, looking at the low-end users that are doing a tremendous job conserving water and probably can't conserve anymore, and looking at the high-water users, where there might be some, some more opportunity there to reduce water use.
Okay.
So, I'll have some more information on that on this slide here.
Okay.
So, as opposed to a 50% level rationing island-wide, based on the criteria and the data points that I shared with you previously, what we intend to file with the CPUC is a 40% rationing level for Avalon customers, with the exception of the Hamilton Cove complex. And that is namely due to the desalination plant to be able to relieve the stress on Middle Ranch Reservoir. So, we can come in at a lesser percentage. 40% rationing is also what we're already realizing with the Stage 2 results. So, we're coming in, understandably, that is an aggregate island-wide. This will still have some impacts on some customers that are below that threshold. But on aggregate, it's where the island already is at for the last 24 months or so. For Hamilton Cove and then the rest of the island, we'd be activating 50% rationing for those customers. But some of the other differences with Stage 3 compared to Stage 2, we received a lot of customers that submitted variance requests. And some were approved, some were denied, some we, we looked at usage from one month, and there was opportunities to move it to a next month. So, for a calendar year, there was, there was a net zero change. But customers' usage may have fluctuated for one reason or another, and we could just simply reallocate it. So, for customers with an approved variance from Stage 2, we're not going to revert back to their baseline use. We're going to use their approved variance amount. So, it should mean that fewer customers have to go through the process of submitting variance requests to us. And we'll just adjust that, that variance amount to an equivalent amount, to either the 40 or the 50% rationing level. The other thing that's going to be different with Stage 3 is that we're going to implement a ceiling and a floor amount. So, for customers that, and this was based on feedback they received when we were activating Stage 2 and holding the public meetings and the, the open house that we had. The overwhelming feedback was, I, I've lived in Catalina for many, many years. We're very water-conscious people. You're coming in with a baseline amount of water, and I was conserving water during that time. And what we encourage customers to do at that point in time was to submit a variance request. And if we felt that they were at a reasonably low amount of water, it was a justifiable increase to their, to their monthly allotment. By implementing a floor amount, customers that fall below that floor will just retain the water allotment that they had from Stage 2. So, they will not be subject to any further decreases in their monthly water allotment. And then, the opposite effect of that is now we'll have a ceiling as well. And that's where we're going to look at customer class. So, based on residential use, commercial use, we're going to establish a ceiling amount. And if customers' water allotment at a 40% level or 50% level exceeds that ceiling amount, then the ceiling would become their Stage 3 water allotment. So, that, that is something that still is in progress, and it will be determined. So, I don't have the ceiling and floor amounts to share with you tonight. But we didn't want to hold off on announcing Stage 3. I know everyone wants to, doesn't want us to hold on to that while we work out every fine detail. We wanted to communicate what we know at this point in time, and we'll continue to work through that and update everyone later.
Jeff, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Before we go too much further? So, the basis for my earlier question was determining where the water draw is. I'm a little bit confused because we purchased, Edison purchased with the help of the county and with the city, the second desal unit, which was to help us, obviously, to mitigate going into Stage 3 water rationing. Historically, we've discussed when the draw on the reservoir happens for the city, and that is basically July and August. So, what I'm struggling with understanding today is if we're going to go into Phase 3 starting September 6th, but yet we have two desal plants that are able to produce the amount of water that, that the city's draw is for 10 other months of the year, then how come the actual city of Avalon would move to Phase 3 rationing?
Good question.
If we're able to produce our own water for our needs, I'm not, I'm not clear why we would move to Phase 3. But I do understand that based on the reservoir level for those that are drawing directly from the reservoir.
Yeah, there's a number of reasons for that. We're very encouraged by the results that we're seeing from the desal plant in brine mode. But with any new plant, with any new piece of equipment, our confidence in that asset will increase over time as we operate it. The desal plant, the brine mode operation is unprecedented. So, when we're doing our forecast, we, we don't forecast 100% production 30 days out of the month. We know there's planned and unplanned maintenance, and we know it's a new system. So, as that confidence develops over time, we can revisit the rationing amount as we have more data on, on customer demand, production numbers. We can revisit this, this rationing amount while we're in Stage 3. We have that, that flexibility now.
Okay. So, and I'm sorry to interrupt you. I didn't mean to do that. The initial, the current and first desal unit that has been operational, from my notes, of which I don't have in front of me, we have been able to sustain the city of Avalon on that initial desal plant for about 10 months of the year. So, the second system that we were putting in, I understand where, where we've been, it hasn't actually been operational. And so, of course, we've, during this busy month, we've drawn down from the reservoir. But knowing historically that we have been able to sustain on that first desal plant, the second one, I mean, I don't understand how the city itself would need to go into, or the, the ratepayers in the city would need to go to Phase 3 if the, the first desal could produce the water needed for the draw. Does that make sense?
So, yeah, but explain your statement about desal plant number one could sustain for 10 months out of the year. So, we have seen reservoir drawdown by more than just two months out of the year. So, some of that drawdown is from demand on occasion. Right now, what we're forecasting for, what we're seeing in the summertime are peak demand days of between 400,000 and 425,000 gallons of water. And some of those peak demand days are in the month of September as well. So, there are, there are times where demand will exceed production capability in brine And, and we're, we're keeping a very close eye on it. We're going to continue to reassess Stage 3 on a month-to-month basis. And when we have the confidence that there is no more contribution to reservoir drawdown from Avalon on a consistent basis, we, we can revisit this rationing amount. But at this time, we're not, we're not comfortable with remaining at 25% rationing. We did not exceed what the island has been able to reduce already. That's why we're coming in at the 40% level. And when we looked at the commercial and the residential breakdown, both customer classes are at that 40% level. So, we know some customers will be impacted by that. But just with the, the reservoir level that we're seeing now, 161 acre feet, we're not comfortable remaining at 25% rationing.
Okay, so, I understand that. And I also understand that there's a lot of public hearings and... and things that you need to go through before you can actually implement the Stage 3. Is that, can you flip the switch in three months and say overnight, okay, we're back to Phase 2, we can handle, we can produce the water needed for the town? Or is that something that has to go back through the process? I mean, can you, do you, each time, if you, if you turn off Phase 3 and go back to Phase 2, and then we come back to June next year, we've had no rain, you've, do you have to go through the process of public hearings again? Or do you, I mean, can you make those adjustments? Because for however many months we're able to sustain ourselves in the city based on the D-SAL units, you know, we're, we've paid for that. So, I, I would hate to feel that impact on our, both residential and commercial. I mean, that certainly impacts, you know, what we can sell and the visitors that we can bring over as well. So, and, and if, if we get to, you know, four months of the year where you're only producing from D-SAL plant 1, and you're only producing, say, 150,000 gallons a day, there's the potential for another 100,000 gallons a day that could be going into storage that we don't have. But then we come back to paying the price of being in Phase 3, so...
It, it is a reality right now. We, we have limited storage in town, and then that's not something that we can address overnight. We have to assess the system by the infrastructure we have in place. The, the D-SAL plant is the primary reason why we don't, we're not recommending to come in at 50% rationing, though, for, for Avalon, that we can come in at a lesser percentage and reduce the impact. To answer your question about the filing requirements with the commission, they are less stringent to make modifications like that. If we were to recommend reducing the percentage of rationing from 40 to 25, it is a less stringent process. It would, it would simply be getting the word out to the community through mailers and advertising and that type of thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
You can't tell, but he is wearing suspenders and a belt. That's the way, type of person you are, right? Belt and suspenders?
I didn't get that.
Okay, so, there are additional water use restrictions that are part of Stage 3, actually just one primary. So, the, the water use restrictions, as you recall, in Stage 2, they limit, for the most part, either restrict or prohibit certain discretionary uses of water. For instance, washing down your sidewalk, washing down buildings, that type of thing. Those all remain in effect, and in Stage 3, there's an additional restriction on irrigation. So, it goes down from two days per week on Tuesdays and Fridays, from one hour in the afternoon to just one day a week, being on Tuesdays, depending on what time of year we're at with daylight savings time. So, that's one, one saving change everyone should be made aware of, and we'll be informing customers when we send out a letter to everyone. So, this is our timeline for various milestones for our Stage 3 implementation. Our Tier 2 advice letter, we're targeting a filing date of July 29th. Mailing customer letters, public meeting notices, so everyone is aware of the public meeting that we'll hold, just like we did when we had Stage 2. And then a frequently asked questions document will be circulated the week of August 1st. We'll be advertising the public meeting on, in the two local newspapers on August 11th, August 12th, and then the, the subsequent week as well. And then we'll be holding a meeting as of, as of right now, the date is August 24th. And then our activation date is Tuesday, September 6th, when the new water allotment will take effect. This was, this was not an easy decision. We know this impacts everyone on the island. But we've been at the 200-acre foot level since December. We've been able to extend Stage 3 now for about seven, eight months, and, and now we, we don't feel it's prudent any longer to continue at the, the Stage 2 levels for the reasons we discussed before. So, that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have a question. Worst-case scenario, what was Edison's contingency plan for bringing water to Catalina?
So, there's, there's a, a number of things we continue to assess and evaluate. Unfortunately, there is no silver bullet solution. We, we did a drought contingency study last summer, and, and as a result of that, we, we undertook the desalination plant project, which was not by any means an easy fix or a, a quick remedy to bring water on a short-term basis. It was a long-term solution that we felt we could construct, engineer and construct on a quick turnaround basis. We continue to evaluate opportunities like that. We're assessing various pipeline extensions, additional tank storage. So, the, the desalination plant was intended to be just the first phase of a...
I'm sorry, that's really distracting, whatever it is.
It's very distracting, yeah. Whatever it is.
And she doesn't know how to turn it off.
Turn him out.
Should we just turn up to brine mode or something?
Really important.
The, the desalination plant was intended to be the first phase of, of several other projects, and, and there are still opportunities out there that we're collaborating with the city on for Proposition 1 funding, where we're submitting applications for various projects, additional tank storage. The, the ultimate goal is to be able to run the desalination plant separately, so that we don't even need the brine mode any longer. We can run Plant 1 and Plant 2 independent of each other and, and increase our, our total desalination production. But there are a number of those types of projects that we're looking for funding opportunities for, to address persistent drought conditions, should they extend before we receive some rainfall.
Okay, I hope you're still considering, or you would consider, that is, your bosses would consider a little bit of dredging at Middle Ranch, and I'm, I'm just going to keep poking at that, because I know it's not the cure-all, but I don't think any one thing we're going to do is going to be the cure-all. But if, if the lake's never going to get lower, this is the time to dredge, if, if any time at all. Even if it adds, adds another 100, 200 acre feet, we're, we're doing okay. Okay, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your information.
Absolutely.
I have a question. Do you have, do you have someone going around in the water police person anymore?
So, we, yes, we, we have a vacancy that we have currently extended offers for, and we anticipate having not only a new code enforcement inspector, but Mary Schickling is now assumed a permanent position with Southern California Edison, and so we're back filling her position as well. So, within the next two to three weeks, we should have two new people on board ready to support Stage 3.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Of course.
As the new kid on the block, if you will, but someone who lived here before in the 80s, when, when the council directed that the first D-SAL plant be a condition of a, of a permit to build Hamilton Cove, that was in 1983 or '04, I believe. And, and I, I mean this with respect, I'm just, you're here, and, and I've been asking the question internally, and I get a little bit of different answers. It's hard for me to understand, over a 34-year period, why we don't have storage for additional water, why we don't have more D-SAL online, or, or at least the ability to do that. And, and, and I guess the other question is, it relates, and we don't, we can do, and I mean this with no disrespect, I just mean it with, as a legitimate, sincere question.
I understand.
And also, as I look at the island, it's, are we in, have there been any groundwater studies to determine how basins interrelate, how, how the groundwater in the outlying area might impact water use in the inlying and drawing on one side might affect drawing on the other side? And is there some kind of management plan that's been developed to look at the aquifers and how they might interrelate and how that affects the availability of water? I know that there's been some concerns about allocations, and I won't, I don't know all the specifics, and I, I think I've communicated that with some of your fine people. And, and those are just questions that I would hope that maybe there are answers that we could have, and maybe as part of that hearing process, it would be good to explain. Why are we in the situation we are? Because we are not the mainland in, in California. I'm, you know, I've been throughout California, I mean, I worked in Northern California where we got all, we got some rain and some snow, finally. But we also have a big ocean around us, there's a lot of water, and there's technology, and so I, I, I would, I just need help at some point, as I think maybe members of the council, in trying to understand, well, how we are, and how do we then get out of it? If storage is the issue, then what, going back to Mr. Sampson's comment, if storage is the issue, how do we get more storage, and how do we get it rapidly? And do we have to run out of water before the regulators then give us the authority to create more storage? Do we have the property identified that we could place more storage in? And, and that's more like a statement, and, and I, I don't expect you to have all the answers.
No, you're, you're actually outlining a lot of the challenges that we have in, in a lot of infrastructure projects.
I apologize, Mr. and Madam Mayor, it's just a long question.
And identifying new sources of water on the island. We have finite resources. And I don't have all the answers. That's, we could, we could talk about that for hours on end, I'm sure. Let me just remind everyone that we are now approaching Year 6 of a drought. It is nearing the longest drought that I'm aware of in Catalina history, which was in the 1940s. We were, we had about a six-year drought. And historically, after that extended period of time, there is significant rainfall on the horizon. So, if, if we were to build a system that was bulletproof and completely drought tolerant, we'd likely be talking about how expensive rates are, and why did we build all that infrastructure when the reservoir's full of water after a significant rainstorm? So, it, it is a difficult balancing act. We have done a lot of those studies, those hydrological studies, and we, we continue to look for opportunities to where we can increase our, our water supplies while being cognizant of, of the impact to customer rates as well.
I think the takeaway that I just got from Mr. Jenkins' comment, which he put it into a different perspective, we, we talk about why we don't have storage, we talk about dredging, we talk about what we should do, but what we don't talk about is how 500 hypothetically households are going to pay for the millions of dollars of the infrastructure. And so, what you just said was, if we identify what we need to do so that in 10, 15 years, if we're back in this situation again, if we identify what we need to do, identify what it's going to cost, then, then let's identify funding that the city could help go through and, and fund these projects regardless of how much water we may get in the next year or two. So, that was a valuable takeaway. But, but it is important to constantly remind us that, you know, we're talking about millions of dollars that, that a handful of people will be paying for.
Sure.
So, if I can, one of the things that we are working on at council's direction was an analysis of water and funding and what the options are for Avalon. And so, what we can tell you, at least preliminarily, because we're still working with the report, and we're going to have to work with Edison on this, is that in the fall, there is a $50 million D-SAL bond, $50 million in funds for D-SAL systems becomes available. And we've already talked with the state, and they understand that Avalon, unlike the rest of the state, is in a completely unique situation, because we do not have the ability to connect to any other water system. So, $50 million in D-SAL funds available starting in the fall, and then they're still working on the applications for the other billions of dollars available for D-SAL and water plants. They're still working on those, so that's not going to be done. But again, there is state funds out there, and the state water, we've been talking with them on a daily basis, well, not daily, let's say weekly. They understand Avalon is unique, they want to help us, but the funds are tied up, they're not available yet. But when they come, become available, they understand that the citizens of Avalon cannot support the millions and millions of dollars it will be, it will call for, for expansion of D-SAL and/or storage. So, the state wants to help us. And so, we've had those conversations, the money's just tied up. And so, we're going to be finalizing that, talk, discussing it internally, discussing with Edison, and then hopefully, we'll be able to prevent some solid solutions for the community.
Yeah, absolutely. Scott, you, you hit the nail on the head. We've been partnering with a, a team from city staff. We have several team editors at Edison and consultants advising us, preparing us for the Prop 1 application window that we're expecting this fall. And in preparation for that, we are, are going through engineering assessments on a number of those projects that I just mentioned, to be ready for that application window. And, and so, we'll, we'll await the outcome of those funding opportunities, and if, if we are unsuccessful, we'll, we'll revisit our path forward. But we feel pretty confident that we've got a good chance at some of the funding opportunities that are out there.
I hope so. I'll, I'll remind you, when the reservoir's full, dredging is impossible. Right now, it's just a matter of getting that dirt out of there, so...
And it has been examined before, Joe.
Yeah, I know it has.
In the, in the grand scheme of things, when you look, you do a cost-benefit analysis, there are a number of other projects that we pursue before dredging the, the reservoir. Additional tank storage, additional pipeline, additional sources of water before we would dredge the reservoir.
That's one thing that you can't do when the reservoir's full. And it seems that the time, the times between when the reservoir's full and we have a drought and, and, or that reservoir gets, gets drawn down, is, is like getting to be like three or four years now. It used to be 10 years, 15 years.
The frequency of spillover, though, is, is not that frequent. That's, that's one of the critical pieces there in assessing projects and, and what we should pursue, is the rate of frequency that that reservoir is spilling over. And you'd be spending a lot of money for a one-time in recent history that the reservoir was spilling over.
Okay.
So, it is something we look at, we, when we look at a portfolio of projects, so. It is a, it is a consideration. There has been some analysis done on that in the past.
Okay. Great. Appreciate it.
Do you have an update on the rate case? The ongoing rate case?
I don't have any update on that. I'm not aware of any, any firm plans or anything like that for a, a rate case.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I know I had to be the bearer of bad news. I think the community is taking it pretty well right now, and, and thank you. I know it's not an easy job.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I like your questions.
Mayor, may I ask that our general...
Yes. We're, we're going to skip around a little bit to general business, and we'd like to start with item, where we're going to go to?
Number nine.
Item 9?
Daniel Apt, who is our...
We have some you need to get on a boat.
Our MS4 stormwater permit. And just, he, you don't need to vote on the item right now, if he could just tell you what he was up to today and why he came into town, and that was the whole reason of having it on general business.
Great.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Thank you for having me give a short presentation today, just a verbal presentation. So, I've been helping the city with stormwater management activities for the past couple of years. I know we're in a drought, so you don't see a lot of stormwater, but it is an important element for the city. So, today I came out to help the city with some of the activities. I was able to meet with the planning department and the building inspectors to talk about post-construction stormwater management, so permanent BMPs that have to go in with the requirements for, for new and redevelopment. Also, was able to give a training on construction stormwater management, that is, the type of BMPs, temporary controls associated with construction to ensure that sediment doesn't get discharged into the bay. I also was able to meet with Public Works to talk about pollution prevention activities at the different city facilities. Also talked about different operation and maintenance activities that are going on in the city and how there may need to be some, some minor changes to that. I was then able to go out and visit some of the city facilities. I went to the city warehouse, the harbor warehouse, and the mechanics warehouse, where I was, I'm glad to report that everything looks pretty good there, which is not what I see in a lot of cities. So, some, some minor updates there, but not major changes, so that's, that's definitely a good sign. Then I was also able to sit in on a meeting on the Joe Machado Field. I was asked to sit in to give my perspective on drainage and the type of systems that they're going to put in related to, to stormwater and water use for that particular system. And... And I'm glad to report that the system that they've identified to put in is very sustainable. It makes a lot of sense from a water reuse perspective and will help to reduce the amount of water that's needed for that particular field. So I'll continue to, hopefully continue to help out the city with stormwater management activities. There's more requirements going forward for compliance with what's called the small municipal separate storm sewer system permit. I was here last year talking about the activities that are going on and hopefully continue to help assistance with compliance of the total maximum daily load for Avalon Bay for bacteria, continuing to help the post-construction management program, which is probably the most comprehensive program for the city. And that's really, as the city redevelops, making sure that there are BMPs that are implemented that are sustainable, that might actually help with some of the water issues within the city as well. Continue to develop the outreach program so that your residents understand the type of efforts that the city is engaging in to have sustainable stormwater management practices. And overall, assess the viability of the program and make sure that it's moving forward and the city stays in compliance. So with that, I'm available to take any questions that you may have.
Can you answer me? You said continue the outreach program?
Yes.
What kind of outreach are you already doing?
So we've developed an outreach program. Initially, it was to outreach to the boaters and to those that are using the bay to ensure that they're not discharging bacteria to the bay. So such things as reduction of fist waste, boater activities to make sure there's no discharge of bacteria from pumpouts and those kind of things. And so now we're developing a comprehensive program to ensure that all the different activities from the public are not discharging pollutants to the bay, not just bacteria, but other pollutants, metals, nutrients from fertilizers and those kind of things. So we're developing a program, a website, to be able to convey these messages.
Does this actually include the entire Valley of Avalon? I mean, does it include like the golf course? I mean, do we know what they're putting in the golf course?
Yes, this is activities within the jurisdiction of the city. So all the different activities that are going on in the city. So we're looking at all the different activities. Some of the education, too, has to do with reduction of water use as well. So it's all reduction of pollutants as well as reduction of water use to ensure there's not dry weather runoff as well.
Okay. Anybody else have questions? Anybody from the community have a question? Okay. Well, then I think we're good. Daniel App, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We have an action item, though.
Yeah, we can just do it in general business. It was just so he could do his little presentation.
Oh, okay.
In case you had questions for him.
Okay, so we're going to vote on this after, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All righty. Now we'll go into oral communications. This is an opportunity for people from the community to speak on an issue that is not on the agenda. You will be limited to three minutes, David Hart, and no action will be taken.
David Hart, recreation. Good news. Open Ocean Water Polo is up and running on South Beach. It's open all day for free play. You can get use of a ball at Brown's Bike. All you have to do is leave a form of ID. On Mondays and Wednesday nights at 6:00 PM, you can catch members of the recreation department or some of the city staff members out playing. And we're more than happy to help teach the game to you. All you have to do is show up. Next Monday at Water Polo, you might even be able to meet our new city... Oh, excuse me, my new community service director, Dan Hunky. Really good water polo player, I might ask. Yes, and the city manager. If you see him in the water or in the street, say hi. He's very approachable, eager to listen, learn, and has a high energy. I am excited, and the community should be excited to have Dan as part of our family now. Welcome, thank you.
Welcome. Awesome, thank you. Any other?
Yolanda, Hotel Metropole and Coin Wash. I was just listening to the Edison company, and I'm kind of bummed that he left because I had a question for him. I'm very concerned that our whole community is going into stage three, and more so because as business people in the community and personally, we've done everything we can possibly think of to cut down and conserve on our water, business and personally at home. And with the Hotel Metropole, we are outsourcing our laundry at a rate of 35% higher in cost. And we've been doing this since we went into stage two, or before that, actually. And we did some remodeling at the hotel, and we decided to take out the bathtubs and just put in showers, which we've had quite a bit of complaints from our return customers. We also took out the bathtub stoppers from any Jacuzzi tubs that are in the suites that people pay a high dollar to be in. And I just feel like I'm getting warnings, I'm getting restrictors, and I'm getting fines. What am I possibly going to do next? I mean, and going to Coin Wash laundry. About eight months ago, I called the Edison company when I got a letter for a fine. And their answer was, shut your doors a couple days a week, cut your hours. I said, this is for our community. People are coming to us because they're trying to stay within their allotment, and some people on the island don't even have washer and dryers to use. And not to mention, it's our high season. I see so many visitors that come down there and use our facility. I mean, I have cut my hours from 7:00 to 10:00 PM to 8:00 to 8:00 now, and I shut down on a Sunday. I don't know what else to do, but, I mean, we were even discussing shutting our doors because we're not getting any cooperation with the Edison company other than, cut your hours, shut the doors. It's very upsetting because the Coin Wash is a service to our community that I believe is very important. I mean, I just think that we need to hold the Edison more accountable. And they are here, and they're supposed to supply us with clean water, period. That's their job. And we're doing everything in our power to help out, but it's very upsetting because I don't know what to do. I'm so concerned. And I know you are, too, but, I mean, I'll shut the Coin Wash. I mean, it pretty much just pays our electricity and water. I mean, that's an option, but that's not something that, you know, we want to do to our community. So, thank you.
I hear your frustration. We're going to hear more of that. There's the issue of public health to a certain degree. I mean, it's huge. It's huge. And, you know, if people are...
Well, this is where the, you know, the comment that I had made previous, and Yoli, I know you weren't probably in the room at that... Okay. Was that if the draw, if the higher percentage of the draw is coming from direct impact to the reservoir versus in town, then that should be reflective of what that percentage is that we're reduced by. So, and again, those were the questions about how quickly can you turn this on and off? If we're able to sustain ourselves with the money that the city and the county has already put in and the rate pairs will be putting in to be able to produce enough water, then we shouldn't be under those restrictions. The other valuable point is that even though we were mandated to a 25% reduction across the board, I think that number was 41% to 44% that our community already has conserved. So in some cases, those that are higher conservationists aren't going to see, because the city is only going to be at a 40% reduction, that's not going to be as impactful as those who were going over and over. They're the ones that will need to say, okay, now I guess I better start conserving now. And then from my perspective, which is something that I believe that the Chamber of Commerce needs to look at, too, is where do we see ourselves in a year? And I think we've had some of these conversations, and I'd like to bring these back around with other members of the community, that, you know, can we sustain a million visitors a year if we don't get water? And I run a hotel myself, and that impact is great. It's an impact on jobs, it's an impact on tax revenues for the city. So I certainly appreciate your comments, but that was the basis for the concern that I had with Jeff.
Allison Osensky?
Allison Osensky, 356 Sumner. My first comments were for Jeff before he slithered out of here, but I wanted to mention, so what is Edison doing? No storage capacity, no desol plant number three in the outing. What about bringing some water trucks over every day for us? Let's get some answers on what they're going to do for us. Also, he continually talks about this is the only place they're involved in water and that we would have to pay for everything. Well, just interestingly, I was working on a job last week, but I do some expert witness work, and Edison's one of the parties of the case. And one of the things I discovered is they own three lakes in Southern California, and they're involved in hydroelectricity and they're involved in recreational, excuse me, recreational use of those lakes. So I think we ought to bring that up. Why not spread this out a little bit amongst everybody in Southern California, not just Avalon? Okay, other topics. Dan and David, welcome. And I have a question about our ongoing request for kayak racks. I'd appreciate if you guys would continue to follow up on that. About a year ago, Joe made a proposal about having an inflatable water playground in the water, and was told he couldn't do it. And interestingly, while driving around the island, I've discovered there's a large water playground at Holland's Landing, exactly what we wanted to put in Avalon. Why is it okay in Holland's Landing and we couldn't have it in Avalon?
I should be able to respond to that. He was going to charge for that. And at Holland's, it's probably part of their camp.
Right, but he was going to give it free to every resident of Avalon?
No, but, and Yoli's very much aware of that, too. The Coastal Commission does not allow us to charge for those kinds of...
Coastal Commission would not allow that because they were going to limit access to people that were paying. Coastal Commission said you had to put it up there and he had to have, everyone had access to it, and because they couldn't make money off the admissions, it went away.
Okay, well, this would be a non-issue if we had a swimming pool, which brings my other question. Richard, you asked the city attorney to look into what it would take to exercise eminent domain, to take the land for the public good if it was necessary. And I'd like, I know we've gotten a response, and at some point, can we have a report on that?
I need, gave me some paperwork on it, and I'll be glad to give it to you tomorrow.
Good, thank you very much. Another thing, the Garibaldi buses, the backup beepers are driving everyone crazy at 6:45 in the morning. Can somebody please ask the buses to pull in straight and pull straight out instead of backing up, waking up everybody in town?
Mayor, that request has been made, and I believe as of today, I actually see them backing up, but we'll follow up to make sure that that occurs, and appreciate that input on that.
Thank you. Something we were talking about the other day, could the city look into having wireless service for the entire city? The city of Big Bear has it, the marinas in San Diego all have it, and so instead of each individual paying $50... Time up. $50, the city has it and there's whatever. Okay.
He took a note on that one, too.
That's great. That's a lot of knowledge there, a lot of information. Thank you.
Hi, Nathan West, been a resident for 11 years. The recent massive increase in mooring fees. I would like to have some kind of justification. Why increase them by a massive amount of 18%?
Would you like to respond?
Is that not on the agenda, or is...
It's on the agenda.
So that will be an agenda item, that there will be a report?
Okay, so talk about that.
And can you give a full report, appropriate? It's not on the agenda?
I don't...
It's part of the fees.
I think we've already voted on this.
No?
It's part of the fee schedule.
It's part of the budget.
Yeah.
Okay.
The mooring fees are not on the agenda. The mooring fees have been approved by city council. So I think we can address it. The reason, the reason why the mooring fees were increased is because we were projecting increased operational expenses, not just for, we've heard some people talk about shoreboat, that is one of the increases, but there's also increases in labor, in repairs and maintenance.
18%?
Not 18% for all of the operations, but in order to meet our obligations for repairs and maintenance of our piers, our docks, our floats, our vessels, those need repairing. And we ended up, we ended up deferring... I'm answering your question. And we ended up deferring needed capital expenditures because the harbor fund doesn't have sufficient funds. So revenues need to still be increased in order to accomplish these needed capital expenditures. And we also deferred about $300,000 worth of repairs and maintenance that were needed this year, but we're deferring them to the next year. So those were the reasons why we decided to increase the mooring fees.
Okay. Well, as has been pointed out, the idea of just a few people being subject to a massive increase in order to pay for stuff that the whole city is using and benefits the whole city, I just don't understand it. Why, the mooring fees represent the biggest personal expense in my budget, and you just blew my budget completely. I can't afford to live here anymore. I mean, I've been here 11 years. I've worked in the city for 11 years. I work with vessel assist. All those boats that come in and expect to be having a good time, when they break down, I make sure they get home safe, not just me, but others. And I just feel like a slap in the face. I just find it ridiculous. It was never brought up, not any kind of a discussion. Nobody knew about it until it was already completely happened. The harbor comes around and says, oh, by the way, we know you already paid for the month, but we want more money out of you now. I've got a receipt, says I'm paid up through April 5th. Harbor wants more money. I just find it ridiculous. I don't understand it.
I would agree that coming back and asking for money after you've already paid for the month, and I don't have the specifics on that, but I read that in your email to us. But a couple points that I had drafted a response to your email and wanted to think on it and never actually finished it. I certainly appreciate your frustration. I felt that the comments made towards the council were quite offensive and unfair. And I would have wished that you would have, you know, asked some questions versus, you know, make some accusations. So that being said, you know, there are, there are going to be increases. It is something we did talk about publicly. We encourage every member of our community to look at the agendas. The agendas are posted. I think most people who are affected by certain things are looking at the fact that we do our budget every year between, well, we should be starting in May, but we do our budget every year in June. And at least the 10 years that I've had, you know, been interested in the city or been here, they've always done the budget in June. That's the same time the fee schedule comes around, and it's the same time we talk about the budget. I believe that there is the possibility, we have very few members of our community who do actually, such as yourself, live and reside on their boats. I believe that there is something we could do, whether that's, you know, say you have a subsidy card and maybe there's a different rate structure. That's something that the city could look into. I know I asked the question about the different moorings, the leased moorings that some members of the community have. Those rates were not increased 18%. Those were increased 5%. But because you're not on a leased mooring and you are living here and you are, you know, paying nightly, that increase to you was an 18% increase. It's also, keep in mind that on our off-season as well, there is the different rate structures where there are many nights that are free as well. So I would, the way that I would like to go about the concern is to work with city staff to see if there is something that we can do for the local resident who's living on their vessel, and whether or not we could do a different rate structure.
Okay. I do apologize for, I was a little offensive. Yes, I felt... Okay, I do apologize for, I was a little offensive, yes, I felt blindsided when it hit me, and I was rather passionate, I will apologize if.
Thank you, and I know you to not be that person, and so I know you well, and you are not that person, so, thank you.
But I did feel very blindsided, and yes, in the wintertime, the rate structure still represents an 18% increase. I mean, in the summertime, me, like everybody else in this island, we make our money in the summertime. Wintertime, I can go an entire month without any business whatsoever, it's just the way it works. So anyway, you look at it, it is across-the-board a 18%, and it does represent a great financial burden. Yeah, I would be happy to work with everybody to try and come up with something that's equitable. For the lease moorings, I'm on the list for a lease mooring. With the way things are going, I will probably be long past social security before I end up on a lease mooring, but, and it would be nice to be on a lease mooring, but at this point, you know, that's not going to happen. Again, I do apologize if I was overly passionate in my email, but yeah, I would be happy to work, come up with some kind of solution to this problem.
Could we, I know we don't take any action on oral communications, but, you know, if I need to request this to come back on the next agenda, I would like to do that, but I would like to work with city staff to see what that, what the cost associated with looking at our local boating residents who live on their vessels, and if there's something we could do for them.
Also, clarification, money raised in the harbor stays in the harbor. We don't take money out of, any money that's raised in the harbor is spent on harbor expenditures. We don't take money out of the harbor.
I, I'm not as, I'm not as familiar with the basis on which that was, I assume that it was done on an appropriate basis. I do know of agencies, for example, that where there are residents who pay taxes into the community, that that becomes a offset, if you will, for charges that are made otherwise to non-residents. So I am aware of situations, cities where they have done that, on things like golf courses where they own rates. You have to be careful, as you know, under state law, as you charge fees, it has to be based on an actual cost, it has to be based on a study that's done, that study has to be made available to the public, and it has to be one that you can justify. So the question that council, the council member Cassidy said, I think we could, we could maybe just take a run-through with the finance director and others, and just kind of look at that, and with that mind about the resident, and say, you know, how does that factor in, your point, I think, if I may, how does that factor into this rate? So, we could certainly do that.
So Nathan, you got our attention.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, council member.
And thank you for that heartfelt apology, it's very appreciated.
So, I think we blew it, there was a gentleman here from Gateway Cog, unless he's still in the audience?
Sorry.
He's left. Okay, okay, so I apologize to.
What was he here for?
He was going to give the presentation that Jen Monroe sent the email on today to, I.
It was a late email.
He is from, from the Gateway Cities Council of Government, he was going to give the city of Avalon the update on the strategic transportation plan, and that was, I'm just pulling it up, and I can read it to you. He's from Cambridge Systematics to give a brief presentation regarding the Gateway City Strategic Transportation Plan that the Council of Governments and Metro put together. I also sit on the Transportation Committee and can speak to this, that the STP is the culmination of 15 years of transportation planning by the cog, who contracted Aralano Associates and Cambridge Systematics to complete the plan. So they've been going around to all the Gateway Cities participants and giving presentations as to where we are and the benefits that Avalon receives from our membership in Gateway Cities and from this strategic transportation plan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I see we still have somebody else in the audience?
To who?
The boaters.
Sure.
She had 30 seconds left on her time.
Oh, that was just the warning, that wasn't the.
Allison Osensky, 356 Sumner, I just wanted to continue on with his comment about the rates in the harbor. You know, boaters wouldn't feel so bad if we actually had some services for boaters in this community, but as you all know, we still don't have dock carts, there's no place to get a bottom cleaned in the city. Boaters were talking to me on Sunday at the golf club, there, nobody can get the bottom cleaned on their boat, what are we going to do? Also, even with the supposedly discount rates we have in the summer, if I left my boat here full-time in Avalon Harbor, it would cost me a little over $900 a month on an average to do that. It would cost me about almost $11,000 a year to keep my boat in this harbor. That's five times what I pay at two harbors. So this is a substantial amount, it's not a small amount. For people who are living in the harbor, this is a hardship, so I hope that you do reconsider doing something for people who are local, people who can't get the lease moorings because we have nowhere near the number we need, and for those who actually do live aboard.
Thank you. And what hat are you wearing this evening?
I'm Judy Greer, I'm with the Friends of the Library, just to remind you of the children's programs, we've been having them all summer on Wednesdays, they're paid for in part by the Friends of the Library and everyone who contributes to the Friends of the Library. One update is that the next one is Tony Daniels', and that'll be Thursday. Otherwise, they're all on Wednesdays, and the ice cream party is Wednesday, August 10th. And really, there is no age limit, it says 5 to 12, but I've been there myself. The other thing is summer reading program, and as Friends of the Library, we are giving an iPad, a mini iPad, whatever thing that is, for the winners of the reading programs, and we have several divisions, so we are giving at least three mini iPads. So tell people to, even if you're an adult, you can read, you can go to the library and sign up and be eligible to win one of these. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, sorry, one more thing, the most important thing. We are having a book sale again, this will be July 30th, that's Saturday, it will be from 2 o'clock, I mean, from 10 o'clock in the morning till 2 o'clock in the afternoon. The cheerleaders will be there to help us, and they will be selling pies and cakes and goodies and doing cheers, so come out to buy some books.
Thank you.
Those will be quiet cheers, right? Not too noisy?
Okay, we're going to move on to the consent calendar, how's that?
Mayor and council, you have a number of items listed, if I may, I'm going to just briefly go through for the benefit of the audience. The first item is a request to approve the minutes, the minutes have been pulled, and they will be submitted in the near future. Secondly, is an expenditure submitted for approval, there's warrants in the amount of $1,755,320.45, two payrolls in the amount of $494,298, six electronic fund transfers, totaling $190,239. The recommended action for this consent item is to approve of $2,439,621.71. Mayor, I'm going to just, could I just say that I omitted to thank someone who has been very helpful to me in bringing me up to speed, and that's the city attorney, Scott Campbell. I really appreciate his briefing in advance, and he took great time with his staff to do that, so I want to thank him for that. But that wasn't on the consent calendar, apologies. Item number two is a consideration of resolution adopting the state SEQA, that's California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, as the city's local SEQA guideline for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act. It is required, of course, under, under the public agencies, consider environmental impacts for all of their discretionary actions, and to adopt objectives, criteria, and procedures for the evaluation of public and private projects undertaken or approval by the public agencies, and the preparation, if required, of an environmental impact report and/or negative declarations in connection with the evaluation. Those determinations, of course, are made on the nature of the project and its perceived or understood impacts on the environment. The recommended action is to adopt a resolution adopting the SEQA guidelines as the city of Avalon's local SEQA guidelines for implementing the California Environmental Quality Act. Item four is something you've done in the past, it's voting delegate and alternate for the League of California Cities Annual Conference, which will be held in Long Beach. The annual league conference will be October 5 through 7, 2016. And in order for the city to vote on resolutions, which are then lobbied on by the, by the league, before the legislature, before the federal government, very important that you, we have voting representation. The recommendation is to appoint the mayor pro tem, Mr. Olson, as the voting delegate, and the mayor, Mayor Marshall, as the alternate. Also, adopt a resolution designating a voting delegate and alternate for the annual League of California Cities Annual Conference. Of all the lobbying organizations in California, the League of California Cities is the most effective voice for local governments of all sizes that we have in California. Item number five, fiscal year 2015-16, fourth quarter treasurer's report. You do have, the state municipal codes require the treasurer to submit a 30-day, days following each fiscal quarter, a report summarizing the city's cash and investment balances. Accordingly, attached is the fourth quarter report that your elected treasurer has submitted for the fiscal year 15-16. The recommended action is to adopt a resolution accepting the fiscal year 15-16, fourth quarter treasurer's report. Item number six is to consider implementing a 1.5% cost of living adjustment for all unrepresented and management employees effective 6 July 2016. The most recent cost of living adjustments for management and unrepresented employees was July 1, 2011. Staff is recommending a 1.5% cost of living adjustment for all employees not represented by any of the three unions for which you already have agreements in place, to be consistent with the pay increases in the represented employees. The resolution is to adopt, a resolution authorizing the city manager to implement a 1.5% cost of living increase for all unrepresented and management employees effective July 6, 2016. Item number seven is to extend the audit services contract for fiscal year 15-16. At your meeting of April 16, 2013, the city council authorized a professional services contract with Meyer Hoffman McCann, PC, to perform certified audits for the cities of Avalon for three years, ending June 30, 2014, with an option for two years, ending 2016. A recommended action is to approve a one-year final extension of the audit services contract and authorize city manager and finance director to engage David Farr, LLP, to perform the audit of the city's 15-16 financial statements and submit the annual state controllers' report for an amount not to exceed $36,000. Item number eight is to adoption of the environmentally preferable purchasing and practices policy and resolution authorizing submission of applications to Cal or recycle grants. This procedure, this policy, doesn't mean you have to do everything, but what it does say, that we'll endeavor as an organization to be sustainable, to be green, to purchase products that are, are sustainable and green. And it also, by adopting this policy, makes us eligible to receive grant money that I understand could be up to an amount of $150,000 for projects that are of importance to you and to your community. If any member of council or the audience wished to pull that item, Madam Mayor, if they should do so, the rest can be adopted by a motion.
I'd like to pull item eight personally.
Item eight, I just want to make a comment on item seven, if no other items to be polled, and that is, while I have no issue with approving the extension before we get to next year, if we could reach out and possibly look for a multi-year contract with an auditor, or at least go out and make sure that the price for the services is adequate.
Mayor, if I may, and council member Cassidy raises an important issue, I think there are standards, and I know the finance director knows them, GFO, Government Accounting Financial, GFO, and they say that every few years, three, four, five, it could be, maybe up to that, that you should really go out with audit proposals to get different eyes, to look at your records. I'm always pleased to find when I was being, before I was interviewed, that our audit this time has been very good, this financial situation, the city is, is good, and of course, we can always be better. But auditors are very important in the function, as council member Cassidy said, it is important that from time to time, you look at who's doing your audits.
And just on six, have we had any plans of meeting with the department heads yet, the management staff yet, have we made arrangements to get ready to start negotiating with them? I don't think they've been negotiating.
Yeah, I have, that's a good question that you raised, and I was approached, I did meet with all employees on Monday, but I will be meeting with department directors tomorrow, and I'm sure, I'm certain that that is a topic that we will be having a conversation on, and I appreciate, council member, that you have raised that issue as one that we should have that discussion.
Okay, so, also a question on six, it says, consider implementing a 1.5%.
Yep.
What does that, aren't we already held to the grindstone on that, as far as that cost of living?
We are, we are recommending, based on the other, action that you've taken, that we are recommending that you adopt that 1.5%. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, council?
So with that, I would make a motion to approve two, items two through seven on the consent calendar.
Second.
Moving second, comments? Call for the vote?
All ayes.
Thank you.
So, item number eight, I just have a couple of questions, one question in particular, because this is for recycling, I'm curious, I guess I can ask the questions, it's a bond's question, but somebody can answer it. Are they going to be held to recycling, providing some kind of recycling program under the agreement?
It's one of the conditions of approval that they comply with state law requirements for recycling. So that is one of the conditions of approval.
And that's a redemption program? Where the actual public could redeem?
Yes, the issue is if it's required under state law, being the major grocery market, then if they're required to have it on-site, they have to do that.
Okay, excellent. And number two, I just, you know, I was reading the preferable purchasing and practices policies, and I guess I was, I was just impressed with just the overview comment on this whole report, that the city of Avalon general plan lists amongst other things, the general desire of the city and the community at large to exemplify environmental awareness and stewardship through use of new technologies, conduct practices that are energy efficient, reduce pollution and waste, conserve water, protect the environment, natural services and all that, resources. And as we move forward as a council, and we, you know, look at our goals, I think this is really a viable part of what we're responsible for, to do, and to look, you know, to look at steps that we take, to see that we are ensuring those kinds of things, we need to get back, we need to get on track. So I'm happy to, really happy to see this, and, and good job.
Mayor, if I may say to the council, good job, because the general plan that is written for this city and the local coastal plan is really one of the best, and I've done a lot, I've been a part of a lot of them in a lot of places, and it's really one of the best, it's probably the clear, one of the clearest, and it does state that preference, not only first for the people, the community, but it also talks about that desire to be a sustainable community and green, a green community in all the ways that we can and should be, and so that's the congratulations to you, and to the, and to the, and to the community.
Yeah, great, so thank you. So is there a motion on item eight?
I'll make a motion to approve item eight on the consent calendar.
Moving second.
Moving seconded, call for the vote?
All ayes.
Okay. Item number nine, general business. Item number nine, general business.
Do we have a report on that?
You've already had your report on that, so I guess it would just be an action item.
Okay. Council, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to execute a contract with Olanu for a not-to-exceed amount of $69,810 to assist the city of Avalon with compliance with the year three requirements of the Small Municipal Separate Storm Water System MS4 permit.
Second.
I just want to ask what, I'm not quite sure what what we're getting out of this. At $69,000, and I just want someone to clarify what this is all about. And I'm not getting it right now.
Okay. There are, there's a requirement in state law that cities develop a program for their storm water system. And so we are required to develop a whole system, and it's a yearly thing. So each year you have to have certain goals. And so this person would help the city develop that system.
This company is is a consulting company?
Yes.
It's telling us how that we should treat our storm runoff?
No. State law says how you treat the storm water. This company is developing a plan suited for this particular community to comply with the state law requirements. That's one part of it. The second part of it is, as part of the cease and desist order, we have an obligation to make certain that the storm water system, when the water reaches the bay, contains no TMDL, total dissolved solid. And I missed, I missed, I missed a word there. And so they are also helping us with that. It has been the staff's prior recommendations, and it's consistent with this, that given the technical expertise required to comply with the state requirements, and again, this is a state mandate, that we have to contract out for this.
This is a contract extension?
Yes.
Is what it is? So we've already done, what, three years?
He's already done two years for us. So this is, that's a good way to look at it, as a contract extension for year three.
And it's $69,000.
And Joe, there are all the tasks that are attached for his scope of work. And then what we do is that we try to, that's what we have, is a not-to-exceed. So we do some of the outreach stuff on our own, staff does, and we subtract those costs. But we bring the original scope of work to you. And like last year, we we got off almost 20, $25,000 off the original.
Okay, because we did a lot of the groundwork ourselves, our staff did? Okay. Kudos to the staff for doing that. Appreciate it. Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Okay.
Got a motion, moving second.
We got a cease and desist order.
Yes.
Yes. And so let's call for the vote.
All ayes. Cindy, were you in my motion? Who made the motion? And who was my second?
Cindy made it. Moving second.
Thank you.
Item number 10. Bob Mesker, come on down.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. This item is to discuss the duties of the audit committee. The city council requested that this item be placed on the agenda tonight. Avalon is not required to have an audit committee, but historically, we've appointed two council members to form the audit committee. And the current committee, that one of their tasks is to review and approve the warrant list, the warrant list that was approved tonight, for instance, will be signed by But since the audit committee is appointed by the city council, you can define what you want their roles to be. Some other roles that could be considered would be to select the audit, the auditors. For instance, council member Cindy said that we should consider putting out an RFP this coming year for next year's audit. And the audit committee could be part of generating that RFP, selecting the auditors, and then reporting to the city council. They could be more involved with the auditors when they're here, discuss concerns of the city with the auditors directly. And they could be involved with reviewing internal controls, effectiveness. They could be involved with the response to the management letters that the auditors write at the end of their audit. And this item's for you to discuss what those duties you'd like the audit committee to have. And staff is recommending that those duties be clearly defined so that the audit committee knows what their task is. And then at the time when they're appointed in the future, to also refresh everyone's memory as to what those duties are.
Thank you very much, Bob. Olson, did you want to talk? Because you've kind of brought this one up.
Yeah. I, the reason I brought this up was the the lack of direction. And I know to some level, council member Hernandez was a little unclear as well as to what our role as the audit committee was. One of the questions that I have straight away for Scott is, is there any additional liability associated with the appointment of the being on the audit committee? Do council member Hernandez and I that are sitting on this now incur any additional liability when we sign the warrants, when we're sign the these off or putting our name to it?
The answer is not in terms of the ultimate damages that you'd be, but it's one more thing that if you do it wrong, someone could allege that you've, that you've done wrong. And so it increases liability in the sense that it adds, it adds a, another ground for someone to complain about your conduct, but ultimately, we're covered by par sec. So in terms of the actual damages, that's already covered, again.
So there's not a personal liability, there's more of a professional liability that the city would would. I guess the best way to say this is hypothetically, we we have a contract with XYZ Company, and that contracted amount was $50,000. And we're looking at the warrants, and we have no idea where we are percentage of the contract to actual. And we're agreeing to pay this money by signing the warrants list. And we go $25,000 over the contracted amount. Is there any, is there any personal liability to the audit committee because they have agreed and have signed off on this when it's really not, not, we don't have all the information?
Given those set of facts, no, there would not be.
Okay. So that was one of the the concerns that I had. And then also understanding how the process works, that that, and you've explained it, Director Bob, you've explained it here, that it is, in fact, our role to approve the warrants after they've, the checks have been issued and payments have been made, that it's essentially another set of eyes. So what I believe we both have done over the last two years is raised any questions that we were unsure of what these contracts were, or, you know, just just brought it out, could we talk a little bit more about this? I know also that we, hopefully with this budget approval, have approved the addition of the finance software that will help the finance department better track the contractors' payments and progress. And so I'm thus assuming that that information would be available to us to say, where are we percentage of contract at any given point?
Yes, the budget includes all the tools and staff that I believe we need in order to provide you with more information than you've been receiving in the past and what the information you're requesting now.
Okay. And then I guess I, it may, may change councils down the road, but for, for me personally, I'm okay with reviewing the warrants as we do now. I would, the only request that I would have is to make available to the audit committee, you know, when the reports have come back from the auditors, you know, well in advance of a council meeting, to be able to review that information. But other than that, I am not seeing any additional responsibilities that we need. But if we could just get that into a formal written policy and then going forward, make it clear and explain that to audit committees.
I just wanted to verify, last year, didn't the audit committee or the auditors, they interviewed each one of you, didn't they, to see if you had any concerns? Or was it just the mayor and?
I was not interviewed.
Auditors, my understanding is under, under accepted government accounting practices, that auditors, not only, they should be asking all members of the council if they have concerns or questions, they should also be asking people, other people. There may be concerns, for example, that you have or the public has given to you. And you say, look, could you kind of check that out? And that's couldn't become part of of audit. Of course, the more things you add in addition to what the normal audit is, those could be costs, but they may be important. And the finance committee, or I call it, it could be an audit committee, but in experience, it's a great transparency tool. It's a great reassurance tool because council members are then getting questions answered in upfront, in advance, not that they aren't, they aren't. It's also a resource for us as as staff members to have a, a sounding board, if you will, with elected leaders on financial issues. It might be during a budget process where you're asking, what are our projections on this or that? Or how are contracts, as you said, we'll have the software in place. And it's a real good transparency tool that I congratulate you on having that that function in place.
And in response to, one of the questions was, did you have an interview? It's usually standard practice, as the city manager mentioned, for the auditors to at least send out a letter to all the city managed, to all the city council members saying that that they will be arriving. If you have any concerns, here's my contact information, and please contest, contact us directly if you have any questions. If they did not do that last year, Chris Woidzik was more involved with audit than I was, so I don't recall whether or not that was sent out to you. But I'll make sure that that gets sent out to you. They'll be here in October. I'll get you the exact dates. And if you do have any questions or concerns, you should contact the auditors directly.
And so let me just back up, though, that I missed mentioning this. With this new software, the that will better track contractors and where we are, I guess, even on whether it be, if quarterly is too much, at least on a biannual basis, I would like to see where we are on the contractors, the contracts versus where we are. We have a spreadsheet that we were using before, and it was very, it was helpful in knowing, you know, where we are. So if that's something that we could add to this, that maybe city staff sits down on quarterly or biannually and kind of goes through where we are on all of those contracts would be great.
Okay.
And I don't know, it's a suggestion, so it's open for.
David, is that, have you done something like that where they've they've provided the contractor spreadsheet?
Well, it sounds like that you've approved software that will give really some pretty real-time information to you about contract status, progress against a budget. I would imagine that, and I haven't, we haven't talked about this, Bob and I, but I would imagine that it would show where funds are encumbered, which would then, in effect, be spent, but they're earmarked, so they're spent, so they're not available. And is that, is that a fair representation?
Yes. The software that that we have will be able to show encumbrances. And I have hopes within the next three months or so to be able to get our financial data updated and then uploaded to a software called OpenGov that then would be available for department heads, city, city council members, and the public to be able to review.
And keeping in mind that we are a contract city, and we often do produce work and reports and whatnot based on contractors because we don't have the the city staff bandwidth, nor do we have the the revenues to be able to have that sort of bandwidth and certainly don't have the workload needed for it. So for for members of the community who often ask about all of the many contractors that we have, that information has been valuable to me to answer those questions, to pull it up and say, well, this, you know, this is the reason why we have this. And this is a two-month reporting period that you wouldn't necessarily have a highly qualified staff member for two months worth of work.
And on the lighter side, I wonder, were the council members for the City of Bell on the audit committee?
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, the people ring their bell.
Well, and then that certainly brings up the concern of, you know, what liability do we have if we have, if we don't have a lot of the information and we're signing names to this? I just, I really want that, I want to know what the liability is.
And my name's on every check.
And you sign every, you, your name's stamped on every check before we even see it, so.
The beauty is the more, the more eyes that are on on these transactions, everyone, I'm sure, has the intent to do the right thing and to follow and so on. But the more eyes there are asking the questions, it's never too many questions, but remind me that I said that sometime, but there's never, there's never too many questions. It's do we have the answers to the questions that are that are important? We have to have the answers to the questions that you ask as council members or that the public asks related to the finance system. And it sounds like we're putting that infrastructure together to get those answers and make sure they're available.
Do you feel we've given enough direction on that?
Yeah, we can. Yes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the discussion.
You're welcome, and I'll stay here because.
Yeah, because you're up next. I'm number 11.
So is that, do we require a vote, or we just good, right?
No.
We're good way.
They're going to stay like there, but just Adam.
Yeah, okay.
And we will, and we will bring back the policy. We'll take what you've said and we'll draft it and we'll bring it back just to make sure that that it's, we have conformed with what your direction is. We'll codify it, if you will, not codify it in the code, but in writing.
Perfect. Okay. Item number 11. Take it away, Bob.
Item number 11 is adopting the fiscal year 1617 budget. It was presented to you on July 14. And there were a few recommended changes, and those changes have been implemented, and the reports were reprinted and sent to you. The overall changes added about $658,000 to the total additional expenditures. And the above changes will utilize reserves and grants to fund that additional expenditure. And staff is recommending that the budget be adopted. And I'm available for any questions.
Before we agree to the $500,000 to add the reclaimed water design, can we get an update on information from the health department? Do we, do we have any sort of formal update?
Do you know what Dennis found out? He spoke to.
Yes, I know, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I know you, I know you're current on this with the concern that you had raised, and then Mr. Jake was able to answer.
Dennis talked to county health, and county health on the surface says it's a doable thing. It'll be interesting to see when they get into the weeds, is how doable it is, but.
So they've made contact.
They did make contact. The the report that was given to us also came from one of the unsuccessful turk, bitter peters. That's where the report came from, wondered where it was. But the county's been expecting us to come forth with some sort of reclaim plan the last couple of years, so we just have to create the plan and get them to stop on it. And hopefully, we can afford the conditions they put upon it.
So do I understand, Mayor and council, that in part, we're place, we're putting aside money for that opportunity? Should it be something that we can do, we can afford, and that there aren't maybe other options that that are maybe even more fundable? So it's just, it's a placeholder, if you will? Is that, is that fair?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it's a placeholder, and staff will pursue additional funding or all the funding opportunities possible for the reclaimed water.
Does the community have any comments about the budget? Okay. You have a question?
No, I just have a comment. I just want to point out that when you look at page two of two of packet P28, which is the fund balances, that are only unrestricted fund balance, which is the general fund balances going down by a million seven, just about. It started off the year at, what the hell is the beginning balance? Beginning balance was $6,200,000, just about. It's ending up at $4,500,000. And that's the only play, play money we have. All the rest of the money is restricted for the.
For the general fund, yes.
The general fund's the only one, so we're. Yeah, the general fund's the only one, so we're...
Mayor, may I, may I comment? I think the Mayor Protam, the Mayor Protam raises an important issue, and it really goes to a broader policy issue about reserve, reserve, because general fund is, is, the Mayor Protam articulately put, is the play money, that's your, you have the largest discretion for its use, it's not an enterprise fund. And it probably, as we look at, at our system, it, it might be of advantage to the city to, to talk about a reserve policy, and how you treat it should you have to dip, and reserves are usually, they're just not for having money, it's in case you have emergencies, maybe you have breaks in the salt system, which of course would be an enterprise, but, and, and, and so that you can bridge over those times when there are lower revenue. And we would like to be able to bring that back. Some thoughts on that, and maybe even part of our strategic discussion that I hope we have in, in the near term.
Excellent, excellent.
So with that being said, I'll move to adopt the budget.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion, a second? Call for the vote?
All ayes.
I'm sorry, Denise. The next item is a closed session item, but could we go to the hospital?
We can go to the hospital.
Yes.
Not literally go to the hospital. I will call to order the Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees meeting in July, Tuesday, July 19th. Call to order, then we have the roll call, ma'am?
Trustee Cassidy?
Here.
Trustee Hernandez?
Here.
Trustee Marshall?
Here.
Trustee Sampson?
Here.
And Chairman Olson.
Here. Any announcements?
No.
There was an announcement in the Islander about a new doctor that we have hired, another permanent doctor, Amy, who will live on the island, her husband's a LA County Fire Captain who will work on the mainland, lived here, it's kind of cool. Any written communication?
None that we're aware of.
Got to love it. Presentations, none. Oral communication? The hospital board will accept comments from the public at this time, no action will be taken on non-agenda items at this meeting, speakers should limit their comments to three minutes each. They are flocking to the podium. I guess there is none. Consent calendar. I could do the consent, help. Order trustees' actions, order trustees' actions for the approved, the June 21st Hospital Board of Trustees actions, that's a recommended action, and the chief executive officers, chief executive officers' board report, and chief financial officers' report, and the recommendation is to receive the reports for June and for May. Please, I'm on.
I'll make a motion to approve consent calendar items one and two.
Discussion?
Discussion. I'll second up.
I'll call for the question.
All ayes.
General business, none. We get big bucks for this, don't we? Sure. Chair report, none? Members report?
I have none.
Can I just announce that is in reference to that new doctor?
Mm-hmm.
Her name is Amy Warren, and she is accepting appointments right now, she's a new doctor. If anybody wants to know more about her, it's, they gave it to us in a, Jason Paray gave this to, information to us, but she's now accepting appointments, so she'll be at work, I believe, in September. She's starting her tenure here in Avalon, so she's a new young doctor, and I'm sure you'll be excited about her, she's really good.
Moving a family and everything.
I understand, she's not going to be in the rotation to go upstairs, she will stay in the clinic.
Yep.
So you can make an appointment this year?
Yep.
Well, we're going to go into closed session. Oh, I'm sorry, you have to adjourn. Come on.
We're adjourned.
Oh, my goodness.
And I'm going to say goodnight to Tony at this point, because we are going into closed session.
Goodnight, Tony.
We have one closed session item, it's Amanda Cook versus the city of Avalon, the case number has not yet been assigned.
Can I just ask, why are we going into closed session for this? Because all of this has been discussed publicly, and...
Because there's a lawsuit that's been filed, and is to discuss. That lawsuit, it's pending litigation.
And so is, is the actual lawsuit that's been filed, is that public information?
Yes.
Can members of the public review that?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it hasn't, it doesn't, it hasn't been assigned a case number yet.
Right.
Okay. Excuse me, and we are back from closed session. City attorney?
In closed session, the council unanimously directed the city attorney to defend the lawsuit brought by Amanda Cook.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, meeting adjourned.
Goodnight, Tony.
You know, Mayor?